The regular meeting of the Aurora City Council from Monday, November 3rd, 2025 is called to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Kaufman.
Uh, here.
Councilmember Bergen. Councilmember Coombs.
President.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hancock. Councilmember Drinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Casson.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Mario. Mayor Proton Sundberg.
Here.
Bergen is here. Hancock is here, Katie, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, there's a quorum.
Uh, please, uh, join me in invocation. Oh, oh, Lord, our God and our Father, we come to you and we ask that you look upon this particular gathering tonight to keep us safe and guide us in our decision. Bless our city with honorable citizens, industries, sound education, and good government. We unite our community together, even though we come from different backgrounds. We pray that there'll be justice and peace in our city. Give the city council and citizens the wisdom, direction, and sensitivity to the business and proceedings before us tonight. Hear us therefore as we commit this meeting to the help of our community. Amen. Uh, please join me in the place of allegiance. By the way, to the five.
Like, of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, land acknowledgement, the city of Aurora acknowledges that we gather on the territories and ancestral homelands of the Cheyenne, Uta-Mapo, and Lakota peoples, past and present. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. Indigenous peoples have remained committed to the stewardship of this land over many centuries. As these words of acknowledgement are spoken and heard, uh, the ties that these, uh, nations have to their traditional homelands and to the vital place in the ecosystem are renewed and reaffirmed, and we are called upon to be better stewards of the land we inhabit as we continue to work to meet the needs of our entire community. Executive session, uh, update, uh, during, uh, the executive, uh, session, uh, we just discussed, um, uh, a urban renewal issue, uh, between the city of Aurora and the Aurora Public Schools. Um, motion is in order, uh, for the approval of the minutes from October twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved, Mayor.
Second. I'm sorry, who was, um, who moved it?
Hancock.
Uh, moved by Councilmember Hancock and seconded by?
The sound.
Uh, Councilmember Gassau, uh, discussion? I say no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of the minutes, uh, for October twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Katie, I'm E.S. Drinsky.
Thank you. Mayor Kaufman.
Um, Mayor Woches.
Mayor Proton Sundberg. And Councilmember Bergen.
I'm a yes.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five council meeting minutes.
Motion is in order for the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor.
Um.
Bergen.
Oh, Councilmember Bergen.
Uh, move to, um, a motion to, to approve the adoption of the agenda.
Uh, it's been moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Mayor second.
Second by Council, uh, Member Lawson, uh, to, to, um, approve, uh, the adoption of the agenda discussion. Uh, say no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of the agenda.
Katie, I'm E.S. Drinsky.
Mayor Kaufman.
Uh, Mayor Woches.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the agenda.
Okay. Our next question before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on motions, items number nine C one to nine C two. Uh, motion is in order.
Mayor Bergen.
Uh, Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve nine C one through nine C two.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
Mayor second.
Uh, Councilmember Lawson to approve the consent calendar on motions, item number nine C one to nine C two. A discussion? I see no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of the, uh, consent calendar on motions, item number nine C one to nine C two.
Katie, I'm E.S. Drinsky.
Mayor Kaufman. Mayor.
Uh, Mayor Woches.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the consent calendar for motions.
Next question before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances, item number ten A one to ten B thirteen. Uh, motion is in order.
Mayor Bergen.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve ten A one through ten B thirteen.
You know, my notes say, uh, ten A one to ten B thirteen, but I'm looking, okay.
That's what I said. That's what I said.
Oh, I see it. Okay, ten A one to ten B, I'm just looking at my own. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Mayor second.
Uh, is removed by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by Councilmember Coombs to approve the consent calendar item on resolutions and ordinances, item number ten A one to ten B thirteen. Discussion? I see no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances, uh, ten A one to ten B thirteen.
Katie, I'm E.S. Drinsky.
Councilmember Hancock. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt the consent calendar for resolutions and ordinances.
First, now read the title to item number eleven A.
Item eleven A is public hearing and consideration of ordinance twenty twenty-five one oh three, amending sections one forty-six, two point five, one forty-six, three point two, and one forty-six, four point two of the Unified Development Ordinance pertaining to the Airport Potential Zone District.
A public hearing is now open, presentation by staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Jeremiah Fettig, and I'll be presenting the proposed Unified Development Ordinance text amendments concerning the Accident Potential Zone District. The Planning and Business Development Department recommends amending the Unified Development Ordinance, U D O, to promote additional development opportunities in the Accident Potential Zone or the A P Z District. The proposal is to add back in the previously permitted use of light manufacturing and some general cleanup items. Furthermore, no property would be made non-conforming to the proposed tax changes and public health, safety, and general welfare of the A P Z District will be maintained. The A P Z District's purpose is to ensure development around Buckley Space Force Base complies with regulations of U S, uh, U S Department of Defense. So development interest for undeveloped industrial properties within the A P Z District began staff's examination of the current A P Z District standards. Opportunities were identified to update the U D O, uh, through this review. Prior to an update to the U D O in twenty nineteen, light manufacturing was a permitted use in the A P Z District. Buckley Space Force Base furthermore does support the addition of light manufacturing back into the U D O as a permitted use. On the screen before you is a map showing the A P Z District limits based on the prescribed measurements from Buckley Space Force Base runways. The district is comprised of the clear zone shown as C Z, and that's directly abutting the base. And then A P Z one and A P Z two designations are the further you get away from the runways. There are also north and south delineations to the zone district. In general, the areas surrounding Buckley are less intensely developed compared to other parts of the city. So the tax amendment proposal includes changes to three sections of the U D L, those being the special purpose districts, permitted use table, and dimensional standards. Staff proposes revising the dimensional standard applicability for clarity as the existing A P Z dimensional standards are contained within table four point two dash four and further, uh, deleting tax referencing site plans to capture a broader range of application types when applying evaluation criteria. In the permitted use table, adding light manufacturing as, as a permitted use and adding short-term rental, home adult, or child day center, and home occupations as permitted accessory uses to existing residential properties. The final tax revision is adding a thirty-eight foot height maximum for residential uses in the dimension standards table. Legal notice was published in the Aurora Sentinel in compliance with the U D O, and Buckley Space Force Base was a referral agency for the development application and did provide comments on the proposal. So Buckley had questions and comments on two items in the original draft tax amendment ordinance. Staff has since removed those two items from the proposal completely. As previously mentioned, Buckley was supportive of adding light manufacturing back as a permitted use and did not provide any, uh, additional comments on the proposed cleanup items. So staff anticipates bringing forward a more comprehensive update to the A P Z District in the future. So Buckley's comments can be found in tonight's, uh, backup materials for agenda item eleven A. Compliance with the comprehensive plan, the proposed U D O tax amendment furthers the vision and goals of the Aurora Place's comprehensive plan, specifically the principles, a strong economy, and a healthy community. And it does this by providing additional development and employment opportunities while maintaining a safe environment. So on the slide before you is the approval criteria for ordinance text amendments to the U D L. In addition to being consistent with the spirit and intent of the comprehensive plan, the ordinance amendment must meet one of the three criteria from section one forty-six dash five point four point one point C point three point B of the U D L. At the October twenty-second Planning and, uh, Zoning Commission meeting, the commission unanimously recommended approval to the city council, finding the proposed ordinance tax amendment was consistent with the Aurora Place's comprehensive plan and policies adopted by the city council and is required to promote economic growth and investment that will not create material risk to the public health, safety, and welfare. Steph also believes that the proposed tax amendment meets the required approval criteria. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions of staff by members of the city council?
Uh, Mayor, this is a public hearing, so I believe that the questions will come later. Is that correct?
No, I think I'm supposed to do the questions and then, uh, see if somebody, uh, from the public, uh, and then close the hearing.
Well, Mayor, the public speaks first, and then there's questions asked.
Yeah, pub- public speaks first, and then there's questions of, of staff and the parties. And then you close the public hearing, then you have a motion.
Okay, okay, okay. Members, okay, does anybody wish, um, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this item?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Sal, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Sal Perdomo, and I work for Titan Development. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of this proposed text amendment. Titan is the contract purchaser of a seventy-six acre vacant land parcel within the A P Z Zeller. This property is slated for light industrial and commercial uses, and will bring important jobs to the city of Aurora. Um, we are excited to be investing in your city and to be working in your city. We're in full support of this proposed text amendment to permissively allow the light manufacturing use within the A P Z Zone District, and we appreciate planning staff's hard work on this proposed text amendment and also for working with Buckley to obtain their support as well. I urge your support. Thank you.
Is anybody else wish to speak on this issue?
No.
Uh, very well, uh, council members, uh, with questions of staff, uh, Councilmember Coombs.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so just briefly, based on the fact that you said Buckley's comments have been addressed, there aren't any concerns about, um, these changes causing any issues with being able to continue, um, to provide the programs F sixteen or otherwise that are intended to be, um, provided on the base. Um, this will allow those all to continue.
Yeah, that is correct. Yep. So we did provide that formal development application referral to Buckley. Um, there were some perceived, um, concerns with changes to residential density, uh, with the government shutdown, all of that. We did not have a chance to further explain the proposed changes in the original text amendment ordinance. Um, with that, we just completely removed the two items that they had a concern with. So yeah, there's no change to their operations. Everything will be compliant with their installation manual.
Uh, Mayor Tim Sundberg.
Thank you. I really do support, uh, the gentleman Sal Palderma who called in, uh, with his project. I hope that, uh, goes well for him, uh, with this amendment. Uh, did, did I read correctly that this would include child day centers and adult day centers?
Correct, as, uh, accessory to, uh, existing residential. So those are accessory uses in the use table. Um, so this just brings in, you know, allowing those to be permitted because in section three point three of the U D L, anything adopt or any, uh, a home constructed prior to twenty nineteen, the effective date of the, uh, U D L adoption is seen as a, uh, conforming structure. So we felt it best to bring in those permitted uses as they are also permitted on any other existing single, uh, family detached property.
But this would not allow us to rebuild on the Beck Rec Center property.
So uses where, um, large numbers gather, uh, of individuals gather, um, would, you know, not be permitted per the installation manual from the Department of Defense. And also, it was not permitted previously before the U D L is up, adopted, or updated, and this would have no change in that.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Uh, I'm seeing none. Uh, the public hearing is now closed, uh, and a motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lawson.
I approve nine, I mean, I'm sorry, I approve, um, I've got my next, mixed up here, twelve A. I'm blanking next up. Sorry, Mayor. I approve eleven. I don't even know where I'm at because I'm looking.
Motion, motion to approve eleven A.
Oh, motion to approve eleven A. I'm sorry, I was looking at my thing and I got twelve. Sorry about that.
No problem. Move my Councilmember Lawson, seconded by?
Drinsky.
Saying my Councilmember Drinsky to approve item number eleven A, uh, discussion? I see none question before, or call for the question on the, uh, motion to approve item number eleven A.
Katie, I'm E.S. Drinsky.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt item eleven A.
Look, now please read the title to item number twelve A.
Item twelve A is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five one oh two, amending section fifty thirty-seven of the City Code of the City of Aurora, Colorado, related to funding for community service agencies and programs.
Uh, presentation by staff?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Jessica Prosser, Director of Housing and Community Services. This ordinance continues the one percent marijuana sales tax dedicated to youth violence, of funding our Aurora Save Program, uh, focused on gun violence intervention, uh, model for the city of Aurora. Um, happy to take any questions, um, that you have.
Questions of staff?
Mayor, can I just make a comment on this?
Oh, Councilmember Lawson.
Yeah, since I didn't, um, I wasn't able to.
Only, only questions at this point, Mayor. Sorry, it's a public hearing.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, are you sure this is a public?
Is it? Hold on, let me, I'm.
It's not a.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Lawson, it is not a public hearing, my bad.
Councilmember Lawson.
Okay, no problem. Um, so I didn't get to speak on this, um, at the last meeting. Um, so I just hope, um, this program has been a very, very instrumental program. I, um, to Aurora youth, and I really hope that my colleagues will support it. I know I heard some questions about the five-year term. However, with the clause that is in the ordinance where a council can come back and make it, make changes, I hope that that would be, um, something that will at least alleviate some of the concerns, although I think this is a good program, and I think it will be long-term. But I think within that, having that clause there, um, where a council can come back and make changes depending on if the measurements aren't good, or if they feel that the program is not, um, benefiting, um, I think that that should be something that should be in consideration as well. Um, if you've heard this program or this presentation, if you haven't had it at your town hall, I would suggest that you do. Um, I had it at my town hall about a month ago, and my residents were just completely amazed about all the work that this program is doing. So again, I understand that, you know, we're looking at business, and we're looking, we're taking money from the Marijuana Fund. Marijuana funding is going down, but again, um, future councils can make decisions based on measurements, also based on what is happening in the city at that time. But again, I think that this is a program that needs to, has been beneficial to our youth, and I hope that my colleagues will support it. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawson, and thanks for your leadership on this issue. Uh, Councilmember Gardner?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I, as I said last time, I don't support, um, a tax on one specific type of business. Um, it's not about the program. I think the program is successful. Um, and as such, I think we should figure out a way to fund it from the general fund. Um, you know, we're not choosing to tax alcohol, we're not choosing to tax junk food. Like, there's a lot of other products, um, that we're not choosing, and obviously, we've decided that, you know, taxing marijuana differently, um, is an acceptable constituency to do this towards, and I don't agree with that philosophy. Um, so I'm not going to support it, but it's certainly not because of the, the program. I think the program is successful, and, um, I just wish we'd find a different way to fund it.
Councilmember Coombs.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I had a couple people after the last meeting reach out to me. So first, I just want to start with, I am supportive of us maintaining these funds coming in and these programs, but there were two main questions that were raised to me. One is, why are we not doing more prevention instead of just intervention? Um, and providing pro-social activities for youth. Um, so that was one major question. And then the other was about how youth are being identified and tracked. Um, like, what tools are we using to say, hey, we see that young people are potentially involved in crime? And so I know, obviously, prior, um, involvement is one issue, but there have been conversations about someone's been identified at the scene of other violent incidents, and so folks had a question for me about how are we identifying that they were present? Um, so folks can, uh, Jessica, you can address kind of what the tools are that are being used to connect, uh, young people to criminal instances, aside from actual citations. Um, just for the benefit of the public who have asked me those questions.
Sure, happy to. So to the first question around, uh, prevention is identified through the iterations of this program. Since twenty twenty, there's several other, uh, nonprofits and agencies providing prevention work in the community. Um, and also based on direction of council, we revamped and pivoted towards a more gun violence-specific program two years ago and created the SAVE Program where we found that there's more impact on gun violence, really focusing on intervention services. Some of our service providers still provide some tangential prevention services as well, um, working with the youth that are identified. Uh, to your second question, um, with the program, when you're saying people identified, um, so obviously, there's detectives and analysts that work with this program, and so if there's a violent incident involving, um, gun violence, folks that are associated directly with that gun violence are obviously being notified through our custom notifications. So they may not be the trigger puller, they might have been in the vehicle, they might have been on the scene. They might, uh, be identified through social network analysis to be associated either with the victims or the offenders. Um, so that's a little bit about how folks get identified, um, that are at risk of either being a victim, um, or an offender themselves, trending in that direction.
Further, uh, questions of staff? Um, seeing none, uh, motion is in order.
Mayor, I move to, um, I move to, um, I can't even talk today. I'm sorry, Mayor. I move, I have motion to move twelve A, sorry. Again, I get it together.
Moved by Councilmember Lawson, seconded by?
Drinsky.
Seconded by Councilmember Drinsky, uh, uh, to approve item number twelve A, discussion? I see no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number twelve A.
Katie, I'm E.S. Drinsky.
Councilmember Bergen. Thank you. The motion passes with eight yes votes and one no vote from Councilmember Gardner.
Reports, um?
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, who's it?
Bergen, sorry.
Oh, Councilmember Bergen.
Yes, uh, Mayor, I'd like to, uh, move to reconsider nine A two, um, to reconsider the appointment of three members to the Public Defender Commission as I was on the prevailing side.
Oh, very well.
Okay, um, yeah, so that is my motion is to reconsider nine A two, and, um, for me, it was not.
Two, nine C.
Nine C two, sorry, nine C two. Um, it was not clear, um, with the consent agenda, um, that we were going to just reappoint three members without interviewing them. And I think we've discussed in the past how we were going to handle, um, reappointments. So I would like to interview, um, for the public defender positions.
Okay, um, the, uh, move, uh, by, uh, Councilmember Bergen, seconded by?
The sound.
Seconded by Councilmember Gassau. Uh, Pete, what's the threshold vote on, uh, reconsideration?
It's just a majority, and then if it bypasses, then it will come back on, uh, future agenda, most likely the seventeenth, unless you all need more time than that, uh, we can put it on the first or the fifteenth of December.
Very well, um, discussion?
Uh, Mayor Drinsky.
Councilmember Drinsky.
I have a question. Um, Katie, was this, was this opened to the public? And if so, how many, how many candidates did we get, or was it just decided to just reappoint?
So all of, all of the applications that we received are in the backup, which would be six, three, three of them, um, off a reappointment, and then there was another three that were added as well. So there are six total applications in the backup, and that's all that we received.
Hmm.
Okay, so I think, uh, Councilmember Bergen, I, I, I mean, do you just want to interview those three? Or do we want to choose five to interview, or what, what are we, what are?
Yeah. Mayor, yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Bergen.
Um, yeah, I mean, there, there were, what, five or six of them, um, and I believe it was recommended for us to reappoint those three, but I would like to open it up to, um, I don't know how many, I mean, maybe to interview four of them.
Councilmember Bergen, I misspoke, Councilmember Drinsky, that there's only three individuals who applied, and that was the three that are going to be reappointed.
Okay, so then can we open it up, um, to the public? Just reopen it and then see if anyone else is interested, and then make the decision on who to interview?
Right. Um, yeah, I would think that, that, that's the way we do a lot of other, like, planning, commission, and stuff like that.
It's an important commission.
Yeah, and then we determine later, uh, what. Yeah, and then we determine later, uh, what's the number based on the quality of the applicants that we want to interview.
So let's, let's, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. We still got to pass the motion, um, for the reconsideration. And so then if that passes, then we could talk about what it looks like moving forward, but we got to get past that threshold first.
Oh, very well, uh, further discussion on the motion?
Mayor?
Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Coons, oh, like, I'm sorry, who, Councilmember Gardner, then Councilmember Coons?
So, yeah, I have a question, and, and I guess, Pete, if it's, you know, not appropriate before this vote, that's fine. Um, but it, to me, it's relevant for my decision whether or not to, to bring this back up. Did we make it publicly available in the same way that we make every other board and commission application publicly available?
Yes, we did, and it's been open for four months to the public to apply.
And we had three applications, right, in four months that it was open?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Coons?
Yeah, so that was going to be part of my question, and my other question is like, is it our plan to do this on all boards and commissions? Are we intending as council to interview for every board and commission versus the existing process? Which is interviews that involve the staff that manage those commissions as well as the current members of the commissions? Um, because that would be a lot of interviews, and you know what? If that's what we're going to do, I'm here for it. But, uh, this seems very particular that we're focusing on some commissions over others.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't not obviously be wanting to interview everyone for golf and parks and, you know, a lot of those other commissions. This is a very important commission, just like civil service. So I, that's, I think it's important that we make sure that we appoint the right people. And these three might be the right people, but I think we should, um, we, we should interview.
Yeah, um, Councilmember Bergen, how many people are on the commission, do you know?
There are seven, seven members on this commission, seven.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. How many?
Seven.
Seven? Very well, uh, Councilmember.
And they're staggered, they're staggered appointments.
Councilmember Hancock?
Um, normally I would be inclined to agree with Councilmember Bergen to interview these folks, but Katie, you said that they, this has been open for four months and, and we only got three applicants?
That's correct, and we've advertised it with our communications department on social media and other platforms as well.
I, I, I myself would like an opportunity to reach into people that I know and see if anybody's interested. Who is a lawyer, that's a requirement. Um, is it not, Pete, that is a requirement, is it not?
There are some that are required to be lawyers, and there are some that are, there, there's a, there're different varieties, I think. How many have assigned, Katie, have to be lawyers?
Members, four members of the commission that shall be attorneys admitted to practice law in Colorado. Three shall be residents of the city not admitted to practice law in the state.
Which slots are open?
Let me double check one more, please. Right now, we have, um, two attorney positions that are vacant and one resident position that is vacant.
Okay. Okay, uh, all of us have platforms that we can, uh, put the, push the information out, uh, uh, within the people that we know. Um, further discussion?
Mayor?
Question, uh, Councilmember Coons?
So I just have one question for City Attorney Schulte. So in terms of state law and ordinance regarding the independence of the Public Defender Commission as an entity that is essentially in court adversarial to the city's prosecutors. Um, is council, who is also the directing body of the city, uh, directly interviewing those commissioners any type of a conflict or concern regarding independence?
Oh, boy, so I, this could really open up a, a, a can of worms, right, on the public, you know, defender commission? Because there are a lot of things that, when, when the city council in the past set up the Public Defender Commission the way it is, it's not done within charter. And we've kind of ignored that, um, over a long period of time. So, no, it's not a conflict as long as you're not, if you're interviewing somebody, you're not telling them that you can't appoint a certain person, or you can't do certain things. If you're, if you're interviewing them like you would do the, any other commission, right, that would be the, the test. Which is my advice to all of you would be, is if you do the interviews, do them like we've done other commissions or boards. Um, that is your only way, your only way to control the direction, uh, you know, me, uh, the presiding judge, uh, the public defender is to do that interview process. Anything outside of that would not be correct. But this is appropriate as long as it's within those, you know, those guidelines.
Okay, can I ask a follow-up?
Please proceed.
Um, so then, in terms of your guidance as our attorney, um, would it be inadvisable to ask particularly politically loaded questions that may lead to particular outcomes on the part of, you know, kind of the types of choices that commissioners would make?
Uh, I, I, you know, I, that's a tough, tough question. I, I don't know what the questions that you're referring to. I, I have an idea, but what I would say is it should be, you know, how you would run the office, you know, with how you would appoint. You know, the chief public defender, how you do evaluations, what's your idea of how that commission should be run? But once they're appointed, right, you can't, there's no direction given to them. They are by, by the chart, by the, the code ordinance, not the charter, the code section that set up the Public Defender Commission, correct, they are separate. Uh, but this is the only time that council has the ability to give any input, uh, on that particular commission, just like the other commissions, right? Planning and zoning, um, you know, uh, yeah, uh, yes, civil service and so forth.
Further questions?
Alright, thank you.
Discussion? Uh, seeing then, uh, we called the question on the, the Bergen motion, um, uh, for reconsideration.
Katie, I'm a yes, Turinsky.
Mayor Hoffman?
Mayor, which is?
Councilmember Bergen?
I think I voted yes.
Thank you, it didn't, it didn't pop up on my screen, so thank you.
Okay.
Um, the motion passes with seven yes votes and three no votes from Councilmember Coons, Gardner, and Medina.
All right, uh, reports?
Oh, Mayor, just, just for staff purposes, so we kind of know what, how you guys want to handle that now that we're, uh, we're going to reconsider that.
Councilmember Bergen?
So, um, maybe interview three people, open it up for a little while, um, and I would say December fifteenth, maybe?
Okay, yeah, let, let us open it up, let us advertise it for a month, um, if we get, hopefully we get more than the three. And then we'll come back to you, um, sometime end of this month, first part of December, to let you know how many applications we've got. You all can give a direction at that point as to how many you want to interview and when you want to interview. Um, and we'll, we'll maybe shoot for the fifteenth for those interviews.
Good, now, do we need to vote on that? Is there, is there any objection? Is there any objection? Seeing none, that's the direction we'll take. Okay, uh, reports? Um, Councilmember Gardner? Our part. Councilmember Driski?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had the opportunity to attend a community baby shower um, hosted at the Dayton Opportunity Center, uh, by Rhonda Fields and Maisha Fields. This, uh, this was a, a first, uh, experience for me, uh, attending a, a baby shower of, of this kind. Um, it was pretty incredible to see, it was pretty incredible to take part in um, and see the different vendors that were there. I actually walked out of there with, um, some knowledge and a, and a huge interest, um, in a school in Aurora that I didn't know existed. Um, and I'm going to figure out how to be a part of that school, uh, and a massive supporter. Um, but that, that was a great experience. Uh, I hope to be a part of it for years to come. Uh, and in the future, we'll encourage, um, you know, women, uh, really whoever, um, to donate gently used uh, baby items, um, or, you know, anybody, man or woman, um, can, can, uh, you know, purchase diapers, anything that they would like to make a donation. Uh, like I said, this, this was eye-opening for me. I've never attended a, a community-style baby shower before, and it was, it was really an incredible experience. Um, I also, uh, was able to attend, uh, Wendy Mitchell, the president of the Aurora Economic Development Council, her A-list dinner, um, and that was a great time. Um, you know, a lot of, a lot of people from a lot of different backgrounds, you know, gathering at this event. It's one of the largest events in the, uh, you know, of the year. Um, I guess I say that, and I'm the one that doesn't go to a lot of these events anymore because it's the same people at all of these events. But this is the one event where there are different people, and it's not the same people, uh, at, at this event. Um, so that was a great time, um, and I, I look forward, um, to some deals coming, coming down the pipeline and coming out of the AEDC. Um, and then as usual, um, with, with the holidays coming, I know families, different folks are always looking for volunteer opportunities to do as a family and with their kids. Our animal shelter is just always in desperate need. I'm always talking about our animal shelter. Um, please, please, you know, go over there, volunteer your time, volunteer a donation, um, of any sort. Our animal shelter is, is always in desperate need. Um, that's my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Coons.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things, I know that there are a number of, you know, community members that have decided to take it upon themselves to create mobile food banks. Um, I had someone come by my community this weekend and provide information about, uh, mobile food bank that they're providing in our local parks. Um, and so I just want to applaud folks for recognizing that they can also go ahead and take that action themselves. And if folks who live in Ward Five are interested in finding out more about that, I have the information with the individual's contact information um, to reach out and provide donations or to, um, attend their events to just, as a community, together, share food. Um, there's also, you know, all over next door, Free in Aurora Facebook group, all of these different places where folks are really stepping up as a community to come together and share and address the needs that are taking place in our community. Um, and then I, I also was able to attend the A-list event. Um, it's great to see a lot of folks in our community coming together, addressing or supporting an organization that really does address economic development, um, in our city and the need for us to continue to grow in thoughtful ways. Um, and build out not only our businesses, but also our workforce. I'm very thankful to AEDC for all the work that they do. Um, and then finally, I will be having a transportation town hall on August, or sorry, November, like, what month is it? Um, November thirteenth at the Aurora Center for Active Adults at 6:00 PM. So we will be having, uh, updates from our CDOT commissioner, as well as a discussion on the connecting Aurora, uh, multimodal transportation master plan. And one more that I can't believe I almost forgot, tomorrow's election day, so you, if you have not already voted, make sure you vote. And have a good night, folks.
Councilmember Cassau?
Uh, so, yeah, uh, last week, I think I had the honor of attending the, uh, the grand opening uh, of the new fire station eighteen, uh, which is a, a measure of milestone for our community, especially in the Aurora Highland Ranch area. So I really want to say thank you, special thanks to the, a council member, uh, Steve Sundberg and, uh, Franz, uh, for their hard work, uh, and also Jason and the team. So the leadership, you know, uh, making this project is, uh, reality is good for our community. And, uh, also hopefully to see that in the Ward Six area, uh, the new fire station nineteen, yes. So, lastly, yeah, you know, friendly reminder, tomorrow is, uh, to our community, tomorrow is election day. Uh, please, please make sure, you know, to return your ballot, uh, or vote in person. Uh, your participation and, uh, your voice matters in shaping Aurora's future. So polls open at 7:00 AM tomorrow, close at 7:00 PM. So please, please go and cast your votes, your vote matter. So, thank you, appreciate.
Um, Councilmember Mario? Not here. Uh, Mayor Tim Sundberg?
Thanks, Mayor. We had a great town hall, a couple Thursdays ago, incredible amount of information was shared, good attendance. Uh, today I saw you at the Piccadilly I-70 interchange ceremony, should be fully open by November, well, excuse me, uh, Thanksgiving. And, uh, wow, that thing is going to help tremendously to spread out traffic, provide safety. And of course, uh, ARDA, Dr. Cog, Colorado, Department of Transportation, the City of Aurora, so many people work together to get this thing going. And, um, really looking forward to driving that in every single direction, see how it works, double diamond. Uh, let's see, attended, I just missed you at the Ugandan community gathering, celebrating their independence. Uh, I love that country. I've spent a couple of, um, trips there, traveling through Uganda, doing volunteer work. Great people, very gracious, very kind. And, uh, to reiterate Councilman Cassau's point, uh, yes, the Aurora Fire Rescue Ceremony in the Aurora Highlands was, was, was really well put together. We got to drive on Old John around the, the neighborhood a little bit. And I just want to put a shout out to our communications department, whether it's, you know, that event or the Piccadilly I-70 interchange today, they really put on a tight ship. Uh, they produce amazing videos and, and visuals and, uh, just really bring these events together with excellence. So a shout out to our comm, our, our comms department for the great work that they do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Medina? There's not here. Uh, Councilmember Hancock?
I'm here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Medina.
At least last time I checked, I was still here. Might be checked out. Uh, I, I'm real quick. Uh, so I just got my, uh, town hall happening next, uh, Tuesday, the 12th. And we will have the city manager there giving us updates about the ward, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Hancock?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's been a busy couple of weeks. Um, last week, I had the opportunity to go to, uh, Monterey for the Association of Defense Communities Conference out in Monterey, California, where the city of Aurora and Buckley Space Force Base were well represented. And we even were featured in a video that featured Jason and, um, several of our other community members out, out here who are doing tremendous work supporting our defense community. And we discussed a lot about how we can be good partners as we move forward in energy policy and infrastructure and bringing in business, housing in particular for our military service members, which was really, uh, it was a great time. I learned so much while I was out there. Um, the other day, we went along with Councilmember Cassau. We went on a tour with, uh, Michael Giles and the Aurora Public Schools to, two of my schools in the ward, uh, Range View High School and, uh, Maratchek Middle School. I'm talking about improvements and, um, benchmarks that APS is striving to achieve to bridge the gap in our educational standards for our young people, helping them to be, um, really good stewards of their own educational process, to be victors, not victims, to be, um, active participants in their lives as they learn and grow and go out into the world, to prepare them for that. I also had the opportunity to, uh, cut the ribbon on the Habitat for Humanities Project in the Montview area. Um, Montview Church, um, it was started some years ago with former. Um, it was started some years ago with former council members and it finally, um, came to fruition. Twenty families are now homeowners and what we want in the city of Aurora is a city of homeowners. And this is an opportunity for families to move into three and four bedroom homes. And they were beautifully done, they integrate into the community right off of, um, East Evans Avenue. And, um, it's, it's just beautiful off of Havana, it's a beautiful community. And to see the pride of these new homeowners as they, uh, move into their homes, some have been living in their homes for about six months. They are delighted to be homeowners and this is what we want, this is the American dream, to see our city, um, help people get good homes and become pillars of our community. And so that is my report. And don't forget to vote tomorrow, folks. If you haven't voted, you can put your ballot in the box tonight or do it first thing in the morning.
Councilmember Lawson.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I will have my final town hall of this year on November eighteenth. It will be at the Central Rec Center. Um, we will have parking enforcement, which I know is a big issue, especially in Ward Five, I hear a lot of complaints about that. And also we will have forestry and we're also going to have, talk a little bit about, um, the, um, older adults and what we're doing in the pros department. Also, on Saturday, I will be participating, um, at, we're going to have our youth, um, civic engagement academy. And I'm pretty sure some of all of you may be invited as well. I think this is a great, great, um, segue into the regular civic engagement academy. This is for the youth and I'm going to be presenting on civic engagement and just give some background on myself, what I've done in my career, professionalism and how you can become involved. So now we're going to get to the good stuff here, the legislative update for the state. Uh, the governor unveiled his forty-seven point nine billion dollar budget plan last Friday for the fiscal year that begins July first, a plan that involves some spending cuts and some tax break rollbacks to close a projected eight hundred million dollar shortfall when compared to the current spending projections. Governor Polis stated he will seek again to spin off to end all government control over Pinnacle Assurance into a fully member-owned company. He is also proposing to take several steps to limit, limit Medicaid spending, including capping adult dental benefits at three thousand dollars per year and lowering the benchmark provider reimbursement rates for, for some services to eighty-five percent of the reimbursement rate that Medicare pays for similar services. Polis will ask legislators for more rollbacks in tax breaks, include, including decoupling state policy from federal tax deductions for investing in out-of-state opportunity zones, modifying innovative motor vehicle tax credits and reducing the fuel tax loss allowance. So that's a lot that's going on at the state level regarding the budget. The federal government is still in the shutdown, the Trump administration says it will restart the SNAP food benefits and will use money from the Agricultural Department Contingency Fund. The administration says that there's only four point six five billion available in that fund to pay for SNAP benefits. And mayor, that is my report for tonight.
Thank you very much, councilwoman Lawson. Uh, councilwoman Bergen.
Thank you, mayor. Um, yeah, lots going on as well. Um, so I had E four seventy roadway committee meeting. Um, also, actually, councilman, or mayor Protem, uh, Sundberg and I attended the district, district three, uh, division inspection ceremony, which was really great. Um, although I got in trouble because I held up the line because I was asking all the officers all about their life. Um, but it was, it was, yeah, well, yeah, you were there too, mayor.
That's right.
It's normal. Got to know them, though, it's, it was great.
Sure did.
Also, um, I was a judge again this year at the Halloween, um, uh, dog costume contest at Southlands, put on by, um, the, uh, actually by the Aurora Police Foundation. And, um, we didn't have a whole lot of participation this year. And so I did make a suggestion that next year we involved our animal shelter and that they could bring some of the dogs and participate in the dog contest, dress them up. But then also they would be available, um, for people to adopt. So we're, I think we're going to move forward with that. Um, then also very exciting, the mayor was there, he, I don't think he saw me go down the slide, but Slick City opened in Southlands, which is like a, kind of a indoor amusement park for kiddos. And, um, I was in a dress from meetings all day and they were like, are you going to go down the slide? And I was like, well, okay, I guess so. So I went down two slides and did not kill myself, it was very fun. You did good, I did good, thank you. And then, um, also attended the A-list dinner, which was a great, uh, event as usual. And then lastly, my town hall is on November nineteenth, Wednesday, um, six to eight at the Towns Reach Library. We'll have a presentation, um, on water sustainability. And then also, um, our, uh, Aurora Fire Rescue personnel will be there just to talk about Station Nineteen coming. And that's it for me.
Thank you. So, um, a couple of things, uh, first, uh, um, on Sunday, I posted a list of, uh, uh, food banks and food pantries, it's certainly not a exhaustive list, but, uh, what I found online. And I will, uh, if anybody just calls my office, uh, uh, or just emails me at mcoffman@auragov.org, uh, and once the, once their food pantry or once their, uh, food bank, uh, added to the list, I can certainly do that. And so, uh, I will, um, keep, uh, uh, put an updated list out on my Facebook page, that's Mike Kaufman, Facebook. Uh, every Monday until, uh, the SNAP program, uh, supplemental, uh, nutrition assistance, assistance program is operational and fully funded. Um, there is a, certainly I encourage everybody to vote. Uh, there is an election, uh, also, uh, for the Downtown Development Authority and, uh, I want to cons, encourage people to vote on that. And if you live, um, between, uh, Peoria and Yosemite, uh, on Colfax, two blocks north and two blocks south, uh, you, if you're a business owner or if you're a resident, you can vote in that election. And so really want to encourage people to vote, it's a separate ballot that has gone out for that. But it will allow us to really accelerate the revitalization and redevelopment of the Colfax corridor. And, uh, very critical to the northwest part of the city. Uh, with that saying of further business before the Aurora City Council, uh, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.